Um, why don't you go ahead? Did you get my message yesterday?
Yes, yes, John. So I got your message and I also start uh I also think about it. And I found that from the back end, the query is correct and I sent Jerry a message. So that a strict notification is sending using scheduler, using cron job. So Jerry, I sent you message. So like John did not receive that notification. So I think job is not running.
Yeah, I didn't get a notification. My streak was going out and I lost my streak and I was on my phone the whole time too.
Hmm, and I take one signal Jerry for a stick burning out. Last message was sent on third of August.
A streak notification?
Yes, a stick burning out.
Okay.
So I am not doubtful that.
The last one, anyone?
Yeah.
Let me uh check these things. Not the third of August, no we, I have logs from before then, so. I mean, I have logs from after then, sorry.
Okay. Uh, so our template it is showing that if you will click on that template. And last message you can see it's eight, the zero three.
Let's see.
Uh, my laptop just started, so I will not tell you exact it. Give you two minutes, I will tell you that date on that template.
I'm I'm here, uh. Your streak is burning out, okay?
Last, some last one, we will last one.
I mean, I don't know what you're talking about. It sent. I'm look, I'm looking at eighty-one sent yesterday.
You want, give me one minute, one minute, give me one minute, I will tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah, let man, my laptop has not started yet. But like you to check, why did John not receive it then, like?
Yeah, I'll see, I'll see why John didn't receive it, but yeah, had me scared there. I I see eighty-one was was sent yesterday.
Okay. Uh, we are, we are sending using template, right?
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at it right here. Look, I'll, I'll share, I'll share the tab. Here's the tab, um. But yeah, I mean, it has sent, so uh we're just gonna have to take peek at. Why they did not send for John.
So some were sent yesterday?
Yeah. Definitely. Now, now this, if I made, if you're looking at this, this is a.
Yes, yes, I'm looking there.
Yeah, this is like a sample of the data. It doesn't, see, one signal doesn't give you like full access, like paginate through all this.
Okay.
But if you go through this graph here. This will show you. Actually.
That's why I got scared, like I see this one data.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but I could see, look, even like at at eleven P M, we sent out eighty of these. So.
Uh, so I'm sending the query also, get all expiring this trick. I'm sending your query, which we are using. I send to that query.
Which it's not gonna help if today is not longer today. Um, oh. I think I see why, John. Because your streak didn't expire yesterday, it expired the day before.
Did I get a notification the day before?
Let's find out. Yeah, but uh per the data.
And by yesterday, I mean, I think it was the day before in U T C time, but effectively it was yesterday.
So I see that you have a streak worthy activity on the eighteenth. I don't see anything for the nineteenth, I don't see anything for the twentieth, and then I see on the twenty-first.
That's weird, I've been using the app a lot, obviously.
Let's see. There I go to, oh goodness, this is gonna be fun. This is eighteen or sort of nineteen. Wish I could filter, uh, this might be easier if I do a. An export here.
While you're doing that, Alman, why don't you give us more, your update?
Yes, and John, I pinged that girl of me. Like I'm a circle developer, so I want to test a notification with you. So can, can you log in again, but she did not reply me.
Yeah, now is you sent it as a S M S?
Yes.
You think she, I I don't know how it works within India, but I know a lot of people in India use WhatsApp. Do you think she? Uses WhatsApp preferably, or?
Uh, so I need to take C S available on WhatsApp and not, I sent normal text to her. So let me check C S available on WhatsApp.
Okay, yeah, maybe try tomorrow.
Okay, and uh, John, I suppose today I was supposed to receive the Oppo Vivo phone. But today I did not receive it, so that's, I'm not able to test that one also. From my side.
Okay, so you think you'll get it tomorrow?
Yes, yes, tomorrow. I ordered new phone, uh, it's Vivo phone.
Okay. Vivo?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, but that's different than the Oppo?
Yeah, it will be same, both have same, Oppo Vivo will same, same company, two different name.
You think so?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. What other updates do you have?
And I I don't have anything apart from these things, so can you please assign more tasks?
Uh, yeah, will do.
Though there was something for the um, the activity feed.
That I completed yesterday, Jerry.
Okay, so Ismail has with it?
I did notice a very new message from Ismail.
Okay, uh, may- maybe, maybe check with them, make sure that that's working now.
Okay, so Ismail can be, yesterday I informed him, so I will check with him again.
Well, what is, what's going on with the, the activity feed?
There was something in Q A that Ismail said that he couldn't paginate it for some reason, that maybe there was a messed up profile. This was only in Q A that we found this blog, but um, I'll make him make sure.
Problem, problem was like I went through Ismail for what query, what he was using. I went through till two hundred and I found issue on the page number like offset after one sixty. One sixty offset, it was, there was a profile checking profile, that was not returning post to data.
Yeah, I think it's working now, I tested it.
Yes, that I fixed it.
Okay.
You have put that pull request also, Jerry, yesterday.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was, that was the um.
Yeah.
Item.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, um, so that's all good then, Ismail?
Yeah, as far as I can tell, it's, it's working.
Okay, speaking of pagination, there is a couple weird things there, um. If you tap on cares from your, your home profile, it uh. It doesn't pageinate, I think it loads like twenty maybe, but there's no pagination.
I don't have enough cares to test that.
On to my profile.
I can see your cares, okay.
Yeah.
Doesn't load anything. You get cares and your friends, so like my card, does it your cares on your profile, that doesn't show me anything, is that supposed to be?
No. You, are you in Q A?
Yeah.
Okay, um, they're not loading for you, yeah, I mean, they're, they're loading for me when I look at other people's.
Oh, that is interesting, okay, let's see what's, what's saying here. I don't know, so I open the API. Yeah, they get anything from nothing. Okay, wait, I'm looking at the wrong one. Get care feed, and the posts are returning me empty. I guess let me copy this and send this over to Jerry or.
What, what's going on?
So when I go to user care, uh, passing in this data and I'm getting empty array. And.
Get cares feed.
This is for somebody else's profile, so they're requesting users me, but the user key is, is. Is John, um, and there returns an empty array, I don't know if that's how it's, how it is by design. Cause I, well, I don't know if I. Yeah, I don't know how this should work, to be honest, I have no idea.
Yeah, I think I see what it's, what we're doing, activity filter, um. I think I see what this is, let's see. Yeah, this is calling activity feed query, okay, ah, activity feed query, got it, okay, this should be a pretty quick fix. Ability function.
While you're doing that, Ismail, can you look at something else that's kinda odd, um? I followed a user yesterday, so if I went to her profile and followed her. Well, first I searched for her, I should say, and then in the search results, there's a follow button. Um, I did not press that follow button, but I went to her profile and followed her. Back to the search results, it didn't update that follow button.
You went back to the search results, so and where did you search for her and in what screen?
People finder screen.
People finder.
Yeah, it did update it like after I, you know, navigated out of the stack and then back.
Yeah. Yeah. So you can also, if you're bad, if you're a little bit fast, yeah, it won't be updated, I see, um, okay, I'll get to that.
I'm an edge case, but I don't know what would have happened if I hit the follow button again.
Hmm, yeah, hmm, not sure.
Okay, yeah, take, will you take a note on it?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, why don't you give us update while you're here?
Um, yeah, sure, so. Worked on a few things yesterday, let me pull up my list. So. Um, I fixed that avatar on when you share a profile with someone. Uh, it would, it would show like if I'm sharing your profile, it would show. Your profile in both places, as you saw yesterday. Now it'll show mine on the top and yours as the main profile that, the profile that's being shared.
That's right, that reminded me of something, I, I think we probably fixed this a few days back. Did we fix the thing where if you edit a message, the profile image disappeared?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be fixed.
That's fixed, okay, okay, what else?
Um, and then I looked at the problem that Todd was talking about with where the alerts were dark. And that is because his phone was on dark mode, so basically if your phone is on dark mode, it will show dark alerts. If it's not, it'll show lighter alerts. And that's how system alerts behave, if we want them to always be a certain color, we'd have to create our own custom ones. Um, iOS does have the option to basically. Control it to make it always dark or always light, but Android does not have that prop.
Okay. It seemed darker than it should be, like you could barely read the text.
Yeah, I'm not sure why.
Yeah, that's actually, okay, if, and some of the screenshots, I think I sent you Ismail. While the, while the um, the message, the font um was dark on one of them, like all dark. Um, even the message in the middle of it and the okay or cancel, whatever those options were, were all dark. But in other similar models, um, the font was white, but the background was still dark. If we just made all the font white, that would help tremendously.
Hmm, okay, let me see.
That might be, that might be.
And were they both, like native system alerts?
Let me pull them back up.
I think. I wanna make sure none of them were custom models.
They weren't, they were native, the ones he showed me, but I think um, this would be a good task for Wells. Cause he was looking for some more tasks and he's good at finding solutions to these things. So maybe um, maybe Todd, you could work with Wells on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and other than that, um, so the problem with sharing a profile that we had where, that one that Todd reported. Um, not honestly sure how that happened. Like I tried to create it, it was working, but I I added a better way of determining whether something is a. User profile or a, or something else, like a custom topic, or it's a really topic. So I added better logic there for safety, so hopefully that shouldn't happen again.
So it's some, but somehow like mixed up a person's profile with a.
It's not that it mixed up, so when we, when we call the. When we call the create message, um, there's, we, we either pass like a user profile. Like a topic user profile, or we pass a, a profile key. So it just somehow thought that he was sharing a. Profile, not a user profile.
Do the um. Do business, the business profiles and user profiles. Are there overlapping keys or something?
Um, it could be a coincidence where one does.
Cause Jerry, I thought Jerry said he noticed that Roma's Pizzeria had the same. I D or key as that users.
Well, somebody's user key could be like, yeah, so profile keys will grow as we have, we add more profiles. Same thing for user, so for user, so there, there could be a coincidence where a user key and a profile key match.
Is that, if that's causing the problem?
That's not the problem, no, the problem is that we're passing that data to the wrong parameter.
Okay, I see, I see. It's just a coincidence that they have the same.
Yeah, correct.
I think the coincidence, that, that's kind of weird. Out of all the user profiles.
I, I don't know how we create those IDs, but if you create them incrementally. Uh, and same thing for the user, then there's gonna be a, a good bunch who like have similar.
Right, and that ma- that, that makes sense, makes sense to me, but it, it does seem kinda odd that if that's not the, it was some other issue. And a complete coincidence, but.
Profiles we use a Google I D, which is like a really impossible.
But still, we know in, in art, when it comes to like internally in circles, we use a circle's profile key.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Four-digit, five-digit numbers, something?
Um, I mean, it's an auto incrementing digit, so it could be any number.
I see.
But it, but those numbers should never ever cause a problem between the two. In anything that we're doing, whether the user profile, circle's key or a business profile.
No, but if you're passing it to the right place, like if pressing the data to the right parameters, then no, it shouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay.
But the, but what happened in this case is that. The safeguard wasn't there, right?
It's, yeah, somehow it, it passed that, so instead of passing it to, oh, user topic. He passed it to profile key, it thought it was not sharing a person, it thought it was sharing a profile. And that's why that problem happened, it has nothing to do with the keys matching.
Oh, I see, I see, it only, they're only matching because of the wrong parameter, it was. It, instead of looking for a, a, a user profile, it found a business profile with that key.
Well, it doesn't look for it, we tell it.
We tell it, right?
And we, apparently the app told it, it was, it was the wrong kind of profile.
So it's not a coincidence that they're the same, it's part of the. It's part of the issue, it, it just seems so crazy to me that out of all the keys. Between users and business profiles, that if it's not the issue, and we're saying it's just a complete coincidence that they have the same.
Well, they did have the same key.
I know, but it's weird that in this situation. But he's saying.
Yeah, they generated in sequence, so like if it started at a thousand, there'll be a thousand one, then there'll be a thousand two. So it's only a matter of time before there's matching ones.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And yeah, so they didn't have the right, the right label on it, yeah, should have been. Should have been a place, or should have been a person's profile, not a place profile.
Okay, okay.
And, and you're pretty confident, Ismail, that, well, I guess at least in this case, it won't be a problem, but what about other potential cases?
Well, that's why I kind of added logic to better distinguish what this is, so. Um, I actually couldn't reproduce it, like no matter how hard I tried, like I don't know how it even got confused in the first place. But that being said, I added like better safety measures to double check that this is a user.
It was a, um. A, a path rarely traveled, because what happened is I shared. That person's profile with Todd first, Todd received it in his messages. He probably accessed it through his message, rather than like a search, whereas I started it with a search. He accessed it through his message and then tried to share it to someone else, which is.
Is that what happened, Todd? If you remember.
Yeah, I remember exactly, so the, when I, when I did this, I actually uh located the person's, I did a search, um.
I remember I shared, I shared her with you.
Oh, you did, you're right, you shared it with me, I opened the profile, now I'm looking at the user's profile.
Right.
And then hit the three dots, right?
Less traveled, you know, rarely traveled. So that's why you probably had trouble reproducing it, Ismail, you went through like a, what a normal use would be, because what I heard, I thought it was fine.
Okay, can we try that? Uh, can you send it to Ismail Test? I'm kinda curious to see what happens.
Yeah.
And this has to be in a Q A build.
Oh, that's fine, I got it.
Select the latest one should be Q A.
Yeah, I got it. And send it to Ismail Test?
Yes, please.
Now, John, you. Yeah, you shared it just a, which, how did you share it with me, John?
I believe I started by doing a search for the user by name.
Okay, okay.
Or may- maybe, I mean, let me think about that, actually, no, I.
How else would you have found it?
Yeah, that would have to be it, yeah, it was by a search by name.
Okay, so I'll do that right now.
People finder screens, and then, and then went to share it with the three dots, shared it that way.
Okay, doing that right now. Oh wait, but she's not in Q A, this new user is not in Q A.
But you could do a different user.
Do any user, okay. How does she use any user? Let's do this user. Three dots, share in circles. Ismail Test. Miss Tommy, alright. Did you have any? Did you send any verbiage in there, John, or just, did you just send it, do you recall?
I think, I just sent it without any text.
Okay. Alright, I shared it with you, Ismail, see what happens.
Hmm, hmm, um, I don't think I received that. Was it Ismail Test with the cat or the other one?
Uh, it's with Tommy Shelby.
Oh, no, do the other one with the cat. I think there's two, right?
He's asking, who did you send it to, Todd, did you say, he has a cat with an orange background in the image? Did you send it to that one?
Um, I sent it to Ismail, the name Ismail Test with the image of Tommy Shelby.
Yeah, no, no, the, the, the other one.
Okay.
Who's Tommy Shelby?
It's a, uh, what's that series called?
Peaky Blinders.
Yeah, Peaky Blinders, I freaking love that series. Uh, okay, I'm trying again. Circles, okay, let's try. Okay, there's the cat, alright. Okay, sent. Did you get it? What the hell?
I did not.
Um. Wait a minute. Let me screen record this.
Are you in Q A?
Uh, yeah, let me see what version I'm in. I'm in sixty-seven.
Hmm, I'm just saying. Sixty-seven. Yeah, sixty-seven is Q A.
Yeah, okay, let me, let me just record this real quick. Uh, make sure I'm doing this right here. Okay, one more time, we're going to search, people finder, grab a random person. I'm going to go to three dots. Share in circles. Ismail Test with the cat. There it is, and then send. About a spinning loader thing, okay, there it goes.
Oh, weird. So, who did you send?
I sent, oh yeah, it's from Raven, sorry, from Raven, uh, Raven, which is the phone I'm using, I shared with you Jessica Serna.
Okay, okay, I was like, I thought.
Sorry. I should have warned you.
Okay, so now I navigate to that profile and I click it, which takes me to that user's profile now, right?
Yeah, for me, this isn't the experience that I had, when I, when I hit the send button. Uh, when I had the preview card of the user in the compose screen, I looked perfect, hit send, once I sent. What appeared in this chat was not the person I chose. What appeared was the business Roma Pizzeria. In, in this case, I see the exact person.
Yeah, but like, w- w- we're kind of backtracking, I like, I'm gonna be you now, right, like you're, you're John, you sent me the profile.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, and then I, you clicked on it, right?
Yeah, so then I, yep, I just tapped on, wait a minute.
The card?
Oh yeah, I tapped on it, yeah, then I tapped on it, I opened the profile up and went to the three dots as well, and then I shared it with another user. And that's when the prob, and that's when the problem occurred.
And you did share from here, and I'm gonna share it to. Another user here, which is my other account. And then I'm gonna click on send and see what happens here. And then I'm gonna click on send and see what happens here. So send. And, no, that shared it fine. Uh, but then I, I do have the fix in there, so. Yeah, it's create message, sent it as a topic user key.
Keep in mind, I did it again. You know, I did it a second time, even though I shared, what you just did right there. Is when the problem occurred and I had the wrong thing that I shared with this person. I went back into that user again. And redid the process again, and that user was shared properly. So now I had, so then I, you know, you've seen the video, I have the proper user shared, but then I also have that Roma Pizzeria thing in there as well.
Correct, because that was just created as a other kind of profile, so that, that, that's gonna stay there.
Right.
Well, good news is it didn't happen to me right now. Um, now the, the thing is, I don't know if I, that's because of my fixer or not, um. This one way to find out is if I do this again. And if I do it. Using an older build, which I am, let me see. And just have to share it again. And I'll just share it again. So let's click here. And let me see what this will give us. Send. Do the older build, it still passes as a topic key. And this is without the fix, so weird, very weird. Yeah, I'm honestly not sure how that happened. Even those steps didn't recreate it for me.
Like I said, it worked again for me, you know, the same.
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to see, may- maybe it's something else. I mean, we, we'll try if you kind of. If you think of any patterns. Just send stuff my way for testing, or if you want me to send you anything, I'll do it.
Yeah.
It's like, if you have any ideas of how you could recreate it, but as a friend, I know that that still wasn't enough to recreate it.
No problem.
But yeah, I mean, like I said, I added more safety measures, so hopefully that help block it. If not, as you think of anything else, just, yeah, let me know. I'll be more than willing to help.
Yeah, thank you.
Create that solution or problem. But yeah, that, that, that being said, um, so I also worked on the cache update for the public groups. Um, actually, I had to fix two problems there. The first one was when you leave a group, it wouldn't update the lobby. I don't know if you guys noticed. Close the app.
At which point?
When you leave a group.
Yeah, when you leave a group, it wouldn't put it up at the top.
Um, the, it would keep the group in the lobby.
Oh, when removed from your lobby as well, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if you noticed that, but it was, it was doing that. Um, so I had to fix that. So like, here's. A group that we're gonna join. So this is a public group. So I know, so it's at the beginning of the lobby, it got removed from here, right? Now, if we go and we remove ourselves from here. It will add it back here and remove it from here. So the refact logic was already there, but it was, there was a problem with it because it was. Um, I think it was trying to call early on before some values were needed, like the location and so on. Um, so it just needed better handling. Um, and then this one needed, um, some cache. Work to get it to, well, it was a timing, the cache was working. So like now I, I. Updates cache after that leave mutation is done. I refetch this and I update this. I think the timing was off on those, so that's why we wouldn't update.
I see.
Um, so I put it inside the on complete function that we guaranteed that we already left the group before any of these actions happened.
Okay.
Um, because if you call it refresh too early before the mutation is done, you're technically still in the group. So I think that, that. Could have been part of the problem. Um, now, um. There was another cache problem when we sent the topic. Apollo was complaining about a few things that I also fixed. Um, and the last one, which I spend a lot of time on was this right here. So right now, you can see we have a few.
What's that error? I got that error the other day. What is that?
What is that? That's, it looks like it's a cashier.
I had that, and I took a screenshot. I didn't bring it up, so I didn't.
Oh, it must have five four two. I think they're putting something on the backend.
Uh, now?
Is there anything being pushed?
Let's see, or something else. Uh, no, not like ten minutes ago. Try again. Yeah, I, I got that very same error too, just a day or two ago.
Do you know what five four two means?
I, I don't think you would see that kind of toast, John. Toast only happens on the development environment. Uh, what did it say?
Uh, it was a five four two error indicating it's, um, normally that means they're just pushing something on the backend.
Mm-hmm. Try, try it again.
Yeah. So let's go here. Um, I think we're, now it's working fine. Let me try just to, I joined this on left before I went there, so let me just make sure that's not actually the case, so, yeah, let's see. Leave, leave, update the cache, which we did, goes back here. Now we go here and we go to people. Yeah, no, it's fine. I think it's just the backend glitching for a second.
Sentry is not pulling up anything.
It, it wasn't a bug, it was more like a five four two, just from the backend.
Did it say five oh two? What did it say on it?
Thank you. Oh, I lost it on the debug side.
Oops, something went wrong. Please try again. That's what mine said. On the same screen you're on right now.
Yeah, that, that's when the backend doesn't work. It'll just say that toast.
But you got one just now. I got one on Saturday. Correct. It's Saturday, twelve thirty, three PM, Pacific time.
But, yeah, it was just, it, it basically killed all the subscriptions, Jerry. And like I said. Aerosokka closed or something like that, and then. Through a five four two.
Okay, well, that, okay, that makes sense that the subscriptions would be reset if we're doing an update. Unless Amazon was like trying to provision an update. Let me see. Is it a coincidence, though, that it's this screen? Because I also got that toast on this screen.
That toast would show anytime the API fails, uh, John. So if, if, uh, if you, if it fails anywhere else, you won't know, really. The app would just be stuck, but this one does give you feedback where others don't, so I think that's why.
Well. Maybe we should find out what's failing.
Well, like I said, it was all the APIs basically.
If we get it, if you get it again, Ismael, then find it from the network tab.
Yeah, yeah, it, it just for me, it basically disconnected, so I just lost everything, but. Uh, yeah, if I get it again, I'll, I'll log everything and copy it. It's under your way.
Can you look it up for me from, you know, on Saturday, uh, twelve thirty three? Sentry is not reporting that. I already looked for Ismael just now. I suspect I'll see it again, because we just saw it here and I saw it a couple of days ago.
Yeah, I think it has to do with pushing backend or up backend updates or anything related to.
We weren't pushing anything, though. Curious about, nothing had been pushed in about ten minutes. Right, and nothing was being pushed Saturday afternoon. Yeah, because I don't see, um. Yeah, so if I like do this.
But normally, like, we, five four two is related to the backend not responding. So I'm not sure what happened there.
I wonder if it could be like. Something with your connection that would return a five oh two. I mean, it could be. It could be your connection that returns a five oh two.
Let's find the internet, go down for a second.
Because let me check, I'm checking the console. Being stuck. John, was this in QA or production?
Production.
Okay. At what time you said?
Uh, twelve thirty three.
You know, it wouldn't be any maintenance period. Let's see. Let's see, monitoring. CPU utilization. Let's see, target response time, that's fine. Monitoring. Go back to QA. Yeah, it says all the environments healthy. CPU usage is fine. Or if there's more detailed things, I don't, it doesn't say like how many five hundred errors we would have returned within a time period. Maybe, let's see. Is there any more advanced monitoring we could put on this? Oh, okay, let's see. No, I can see right here, okay. Um, I do have that. It doesn't say that. Okay, CPU's fine here. How? I don't know how long this is, um. Overall health, it says five hundred responses, zero. But I don't know, is, is it averaged over a certain time or? Oh, what's this? Oh, no, that's the. Production build. Let's see, QA. Oh. Oh, okay. Oh, that deploy just took. Okay, that deploy just took a while. I don't know why that deploy took a while, but okay, I found the logs. Yeah, it was, um. Let's see. That took. Oh, yeah, there we go. GitHub must have had a hiccup, um. Yeah, it has, the build took like fifteen minutes, but, um. What took fifteen minutes? Oh, it just took, it took. What the heck? It took like ten minutes for the job to start. It must have been that the actions, like the, uh, the runner. For actions took a very long time. That's what it was. We were, so for what happened just now. I can say that this was a, a, a deployment now. For sure. The, uh, the reason I was like, oh, we haven't done a deploy in twenty minutes. Well. We had a build that took a very long time because the GitHub runner took its time waking up. Which those, those are just servers that GitHub manages. You can't, you can request it and then they basically give it to you when it's ready. Now, Saturday, let me make sure nothing pushed through Saturday. Ismael, what were you showing us on the screen?
Yeah, so I was gonna go over, um, I kind of did a bit of refactor here, um, and improvements, so. The way it works now is you would notice that if you like search something, so Eric is popping up, which I cleared, and then. If you just click this, see how that like faded away?
Um, let me see one more time.
Yeah.
Okay, mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that list keeps, keeps popping up. And then as you type, if you like search something, it. It just kind of blacks out until you get something and there's no results. It's just a blank screen. Um, then there's no delay. So the overall experience was. Not the best. So, and that screen was kind of busy, so I kind of refactored it, moved a few things to a few different files and connected them. In a way where it makes more sense. So, and then that PR is gonna be up now. I was just waiting for me to review my other ones.
So how will it look when you search? Is this current then?
No, no, this is, so this is, this is the new logic. This is the same screen with the updated logic. And now if you go here. And if you like, go here, you'd see the loader and, and then you won't see that list. Fade away. And then if you are typing other stuff, it keeps the old data until. You're done typing, and then it shows the loader, and then it shows, for example, result not found, found. You get a feedback. And same thing here, if, as soon as you search something, it just, it, it shows the loader for a better. Experience. And again, if you just click on something. You just see the loader from the beginning, and it loads the data. And again, if you're just deleting or updating, it waits until you're done. So that way it's not always flinging black screens and.
Okay, yeah, that's much better.
And there's a delay, so that's not calling the API multiple times as you start typing. So, yeah. And then this, I also, like I said, I just kind of optimized a little bit, refactored it a little bit. Um, I'll have that PR sent over to I mean, right now. Um, and that's, yeah, but that took a lot longer than I had expected. There was just a bunch of things I needed to get. So to get that behavior, the way I just showed you was actually very tricky here on this screen. Um, like, we had to, had to get a few things in, in line. To get that behavior and not to show the not, no results early and to show the loader only when the API is getting called and. To get that list not to show, so, yeah, there was a few.
Well, yeah, you made it look easy because it, it looks smooth, but.
Yeah, but yeah, getting, getting there actually took me like a, a lot more than I expected. But yeah, that's, that's kind of where I might, I ended my day.
Okay, so what, where were we with the, the build with the stuff we were gonna?
Yeah, I didn't have the build yet. There was a few PRs I needed to review, which I mean, got in this morning. And now I'm just gonna have to submit this to I mean, it's the last one, and I'll start on that build right after he gets this on. Um, I, it was just, I had to delay it because I, this took a lot longer than I expected, and the other ones still needed review, so I couldn't just get it up.
Okay, and you reviewed his, his already?
I did review his. I just have, he, there's just one more pending that I slackened out, so we'll just get that figured out, and I'll send him this, and then the build will be up. Right after.
Okay, so what are you gonna work on today?
Um, well, I think I got that app to a place where I fixed all the bugs that were reported to me. So this should be, um, plus the music stuff is in. So now we should have a functioning music. Uh, feature, plus all the bugs would be cleared online and I mean, and I think we'll also add a few things. Um, so that being said, if there's nothing else crazy pending, we can either start on something new. Or if there's any old bugs that you want me to take care of, I can do that as well.
Yeah, there's gonna be some little things, um. I said the, that one, well, you took a note of it, like the follow button didn't update.
Yeah, that one I took a note of.
Yeah, so little, just work on some little stuff like that. I probably. Chantel maybe has something to share there. But what, what's up?
Yeah, I, I don't know if you saw Ismael and, uh, some of the messages. Uh, in circles that I was having issues with the, um, player, the music player. Um, for example, if I had, um, pressed the shuffle button. I would try to press the forward button and it was unresponsive. To the fact that, um, none of the buttons were responsive, and I had to hard close the app and reopen it.
What build are you on?
That was, let's see.
And it's Android, right?
Yeah, it, it is Android, let me double check, it's the one that's in dev. But I'm getting the version number for you real quick. Sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven, I think that was the latest one I put for Android, right? There, like, there's no sixty-eight.
Oh yeah, I don't think there is, let me double check on that.
Yeah, it looks like Android sixty-seven is the last one I pushed.
Okay.
Okay, so you, after you clear, you hit the shuffle button, that's where it froze, and that, is this consistent, or it was a one-time thing?
Um, I believe I got it to happen at least twice, and then. Uh, what else was I experiencing? Yeah, I. I went through and did a, a number of messages for all of the things I was finding. Um, but I can copy those over and Slack them to you.
Yeah, anything related, related to that, yeah, just send it in my way, um, it's still, yeah, this is our first take on this track, so there might be some. Few bugs here and there, so, uh, I'll encourage you and everybody else to use it heavily and report any bugs, you guys.
Yep, that was my intention.
To the public, huh?
That was my intention.
Yeah.
Uh, side note, John, um, in five minutes is the meeting with Start Engine.
Is there a meeting with Start Engine today?
Yes, in five minutes.
Danny here, what are, what's the, we just talked to them a couple days ago.
Yeah, I know, um, I don't know what is on the agenda for this. I know that they were trying to get, um, contracts signed and all of that, so I. Um, believe that they were gonna go for next steps from there.
Okay, am I needed?
I don't know if you're needed, I just know you were on the invite.
Okay, let me text Danny.
Yeah, I'm not sure you're, you're needed, John, Danny just, I was just talking to him about. Uh, working with Start Engine, but, um, he didn't mention that you were gonna be on the call, but, um, double check with him.
Actually, he would, he would let me have on you. Okay, cool, um. So then. Ismail sounds like you gotta look into the player situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, well then, yeah, take a look at that, and then the other thing you had noted of. And maybe if all that gets resolved, then we can do the, the build.
Yeah, sounds good, but yeah, I would still encourage you to use the music player more to report any other bugs that might pop up before we push it to the public.
True.
Yeah, I'll, I'll test a lot of it.
And that is on, when, on iOS, it's in. Well, what build is it on?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, okay, and that one points to QA, right?
It is QA correct.
All right, let me get, I think I have it on my other phone, make sure, okay, anything else you wanna add, Ismail?
No, it's fragile.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Jerry, did you find out if there was a problem that?
Okay, about the deployment, yeah, we figured that out, and with the, let me pull, we go back to amplitude, uh, wherever the heck amplitude is, but. Um. Nope, no, this window. Okay. Basically, oh, there, there we go. Yep. This is you getting the notification on the nineteenth. Confirm delivery.
Oh, for, this is for the, um.
Yes, street notification.
Notification on nineteenth, Tuesday?
Um, yes.
It's really weird because, um.
Now, at the same time.
It's not even in my history.
I mean, at the same time, looks like.
Really, um, something weird is going on, like I have absolutely no notifications from circles right now, like this is the second day in a row, and there, I get messages constantly. Sending a bunch of group chats. It's almost like iOS, like I'm looking at my lock screen right now, I have a calendar notification.
I literally just got one, let's see, Todd joined the group, Good Vibes Club, did you get that?
Nope. Yeah, there's something weird going on.
Are you, um, if you pull down your shade, like make sure not, let's see, not like the, the lock screen shade, but the shade from the right. Are you, make sure you're, that you don't have like a focus mode turned on or anything?
Yeah, I do, I've never heard of that, what is that?
Um, focus reduces your notifications. So if that's lit up, you gotta turn that off.
Yeah, I'm off inadvertently, what's it supposed to be set up?
It's supposed to be off, well, it, okay, so all focus does is it tries to like reduce the notifications you get.
Okay, I mean, it just, it says focus.
It says focus, but like, is it dark or is it lit up white?
It's like a little crescent moon.
Yeah, uh, if it's on, it would be like a white background with a purple moon. But if it's.
About like you can go and add like apps you want to receive notification from, even like with the focus mode.
Uh.
Um. I don't think I have it on. I think it's just like, it's there on the lock screen, like the shade, but.
Yeah, it's, that's where you can set it, but, um, usually it happens. But like Amin was saying, there's something you could do to like bypass focus as well.
Okay, but there, it is strange, the last few days I've noticed. All of my circles notifications will completely disappear off my lock screen, like I, like I said, I have two calendar notifications, a missed call. Something about my. You know, where's my iPhone, text message, DoorDash, Slack, missed call, missed call. Slack, Slack, nothing from circles since Monday, since Monday. That's weird.
Um. Just to make sure, you could go to, I said, you can go to your settings?
Yeah, no, I, I know I am getting them, cause I looked at this a day or two ago, and I was like, Todd, send me, it might have been yesterday, I was like, Todd, send me a message real quick, and then I got them, I got the notification. You know, maybe I'll just restart my phone, maybe something weird going on with iOS. Cause I, I, this has been going on for a couple days now, I just don't have any, they're not sticking, like I'll see them come in, but then they don't stick in the. You know, in the history on the lock screen, so I'm just gonna power it down and see if that helps any. All right. So then, Jerry, why don't you continue with your update?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Let's see, Gmail. So for the, um, okay, I didn't get another email yet. I, I sent out a descriptive email over to One Signal. Um, about the notifications that were getting dropped, and.
Danny, Danny, what's?
Don, do you wanna join this meeting with Start Engine? It's ten thirty today, she's running five minutes late, just curious if you wanna be on?
I didn't, never heard of this, why are we doing a meeting right now during stand-up with Start?
She, she had, uh, she had scheduled it, I guess we'd agree, I didn't know it was this early, it popped in on me late.
Um.
Or what?
Dorian, is that her name?
Dorian.
Um, yeah, yeah, I, I have a couple questions for her, I can get through this meeting, I just wanna know if you, uh, wanna join.
I don't know if I'm needed, what's the, the agenda?
Actually, don't even know.
So she said it?
Yes.
All right, yeah, just let me know how it goes.
Okay, I've got some questions for her too, that are gonna end up, uh, taking a couple days to get answered.
Hmm, yeah, I'm just in text, and if you have questions while you're on the call.
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, see ya.
Okay. So you were saying, Jerry?
Yeah. Um, let me show you if I can share this tab. Sent them basically a whole notification, we got the channel set up, identical notifications were sent, and. Basically, what they're, one of their suggestions were, was that the user disabled. You can disable individual channels in Android, but my counterpoint to that was. This is a brand new user, I, I don't think this is possible. That somebody would install this app, and the first thing they do before they get any notifications is to just turn off. You know, turn off notifications.
Right, no.
So that, that was quite unusual, I asked it, I asked, uh, if there are any SDK settings that we could pass. Uh, to make sure that they're registered by default. Um, I was also asked to see if maybe that our notification channel names maybe have some name conflict with maybe like a reserved channel. Um. Let's see. Uh, what else? Oh, yeah. Today, this dude sent me, he sent me this, uh, this page here, and then. It goes on to. Oh, and then there's this thing here, this is a crazy website right here, don't kill my app dot com. Um. There is this website that they take certain, um, devices. And they're like, these are the worst Android operating system, Android manufacturers to use when it involves. An app that needs to keep running in the background, and by in the background, they include push notifications. And I can see that, that Xiaomi is one of them, Xiaomi's a Chinese phone maker. I didn't see Redmi on here, but, um, it'd be like under other vendors.
The number one is Huawei.
Yeah, Huawei.
Um, I imagine, I don't know, are they big in India?
Yeah, so, oh, oh, well, that'd be from it. I think Huawei is more of a higher end.
Yeah, so what is this telling you, what, what?
Uh, I was just saying that. One signal is battling these Chinese devices as much as what we are. Um, that they're saying, there's documentation saying that, yeah, sometimes you can just background an app. And the way that that manufacturer's Android is configured is just to completely shut it off to save battery. And if they shut it off, it's also, um, i- if they shut it off, it also disables push notifications.
Okay.
Um, and then they're like, oh, here's manual actions you can perform on the phone.
Well, what is, what, what does WhatsApp do? You know what I mean, that's Facebook, so they're, you know.
Well, well, read this paragraph, it gives priority to Facebook, WhatsApp, Gmail.
Lovely.
To larger, basically, it's like, it, it gives priority to larger apps.
Oh, that's nice, so if we give them enough money, then they'll put us on that list.
Yeah.
So, and this is from the, the phone manufacturer doing this?
This is, this is, uh, One Signal's documentation, they're like, they have a whole page about. Why Android phones don't always get push notifications.
But who's getting, who's allowing the priority, not, not One Signal, it's the manufacturer themselves, right?
The manufacturers.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, they, what? They linked this Reddit. Yeah.
Okay, so. Are, am I hearing that we just aren't gonna be able to send notifications for chat to people with certain phones in India?
Um, what I'm going to say is that it is going to be a struggle. Uh, that, that, this is not something that we're in alone on, and that there are other people there that are struggling. And we have to find out how to get through the struggle, but, uh, it, it's not like a, a, an obvious. Uh, this is something that they sent on Reddit, notifications are highly reliable, except when the device manufacturers interfere.
Can we acquire one of these phones somehow?
Amit is in the process of doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, staring at Xiaomi, top comment. Uh, Redmi, um. Somebody said this Redmi phone works great, but. Then got minus two. Yeah, apparently. Let's see, Redmi.
Chris says I work at One Signal.
Let's see, postal, okay, I wonder. So, something that they're saying is that there's a China build of the operating system, and there's a global build of the operation system. Um, okay, no, this is actually, this dude's on the global build, this is the One Signal employee, so yeah. Uh, yeah, so after the screen is off for an hour, it starts to close all the apps. And notifications aren't received, basically.
On which version though?
This says MI UI Global eight point O, let's see what that is. Oh, this is like their UI, um. Uh, let's see, I can chat GPT it. Um, what Android version is MI Global eight point O? Android seven, Android seven or Android eight?
Isn't that a really old version?
Yeah, well, that's what we're dealing with on a lot of these India phones. We're dealing with really old, actually, this, this, uh, this comment is from eight years ago.
Yeah, this.
Which is crazy that this, that this is something that they're saying is still relevant.
Yeah, but we should be looking at stuff more update. Um, and what was this user's, um, Android operating system?
Android seven or Android eight?
But wasn't she on twelve, the girl?
Oh, this user, yeah, she was on twelve, um, there is somebody that I, um. I know still has circles installed. There, there's somebody I know for a fact still has circles installed. So.
We're talking about an American user now?
Uh, no, this person actually is in the UK, but they're using a very old, uh, Samsung phone. Uh, that's running Android seven, I sent that in my One Signal email here. Yeah, so this is, uh, sent but not confirmed, and, okay, this guy, I had. Uh, Samsung Galaxy J seven, Android seven point one. And this guy is still in circles, I sent him a system notification, he received it, confirmed deliver within a minute. And then I sent him a chat notification, identical payloads, the only thing that's different is this channel ID. Okay? And, uh, the chat did not get received, whereas the system notification did. Okay, so there's no, there's no logic switching within the app that's saying that there's anything, if you know, the only thing. This is a manual test I did, the only thing that's different is these channel IDs, so we know it's something with the channel. Either, one, the channel is misconfigured, or two, there's something on the device that's preventing this channel from getting notifications. Now, as far as configuration on our side, in One Signal, I went ahead and checked on our. Push. And. Oh, um, channels, let's see, settings. Channels. Drag this window around, um. Push channels, so we have these channels, and all of these are actually all. These are almost all identically configured, except for the name. And the sound, those are the only things that differ between our chat channel and our. System notifications channel.
So what, what's causing, what is causing, uh, what's causing this for this guy then, in the UK, and for others?
The only thing that we know is that the chat channel did not get delivered.
Right.
But what about the chat channel, I, I had to, I just responded back to One Signal yesterday. Trying to see if we can get more information about why this would happen. Um, I can try to send some more test notifications and maybe try to alter the channel. Maybe it's the sound, maybe.
When Danny was doing his research, it was saying that it could be something with. Um, misidentifying it as the type of security issue or something. The way it's.
Would be misidentifying for security, that's.
In a way we're configured, we've configured those chat notifications.
There, these are, chat and system notifications are, are configured identically here, um, that's what I was trying to show here, is that.
Very good.
All, all. All of these buttons, like all, all these here, hi, custom default, default, enable public. And hi, custom default, default, enable public. These guys are configured. Identical, except for the name and the description. And the sound. These are the only things that are different between these two channels.
Alright, so you're still looking into it?
Yeah, still looking into it. Um. I hope we can procure some device. Hopefully, Amit can get a device that works. I could probably try to look into getting a device to its, I mean, it's Android eight. Uh, were you saying something?
Uh, Jerry, I was saying that like we can get device info while. But this thing, uh, we know one signal that we can, we are getting the device info also. It is client side, like, uh, all it's offer, we go, we can get a device like inside me. Like, I really want, uh, chat GPT, if we can get the device name.
Wha- what about device name? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Uh, so like you are saying, like we can identify this type of player ID using the device name and we can send separate notification to them.
Wait, I did, I did do that. I sent, I got their player ID and that's what I did. Yeah, so from this email. From this email, I sent to the same user. Same player ID. Two notifications. Completely identical, name, everything. And, uh, this one was confirmed delivered in a minute. Uh, well, the second, the one that was confirmed delivered in a minute, I have there, like this one right here was confirmed delivered. And then this one was never confirmed deliver. And I sent the second one after I sent the first one. So. I, I ran the test. This is almost as close to a variable. So, so we know it's something with the channel. But there's, there's one of two things that it could be. It's either there's a configuration issue. Or. There's. Somebody, something on the phone client side that is turning it off, but what is we're trying to figure out?
I don't think it's client side. I think it's automatic is happening. But, um, just need to figure it out what it is. Okay, so what else? What are you moving?
Okay, um, I need to perform the backend update. Uh, I'm, I want to do, I want to push everything that we have on backend. To production. Amit, is there anything? Anything you have that, um, I shouldn't be pushing?
Uh, I think you can push up. Uh, activity feed also require on products, yeah, so you can push.
Okay, um, let me go else into what else we were looking into previously.
Uh, we need to test. Alert. Store alert, we modify now, day before yesterday.
The alerts, so that you the read all alert?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, and there's, okay, yeah, there is a change for external chat that I didn't get to do. Uh, earlier this week that I need to tackle, which is just for when you get invited to an event. I want to have that. I want to have that ex, that message that goes out to the external users read better with the link. We, we discussed this earlier. John, it just hasn't been implemented yet. And, um, lastly, something I'd like to do for a really good, nice to have, but like more of an enhancement. For, uh, the chat admin, I, I, I have a way I can get chat admin to work on, um. Private groups. So in particular, like deleting messages in private groups. I just have to do the backend work to do that, to have it support private groups.
Say that one more time then, what was that?
That I have like the manage messages work in the chat admins where you can like delete messages. It only worked in public groups right now because of the encryption. But I found a way to do it from the backend that will also, that it will work for private groups too, in a secure manner. That would be awesome. Yeah.
Great. Okay, anything else?
Uh, let me check on, okay, I see Tori sent me something, uh, okay, like a, an event duplicate it when she made it, is that right? Let's see, what group is this? Nine one six. Nine one six. Actually, I wonder. Let me message Tori. Did, did, is this?
She's right here.
Did somebody remove that duplicate? Danny did? Okay. But, but you created it at the same, like, did you create it at the same time or did you make it twice?
No, I made it and then it only made one and then a few hours later I got in the app again and there was two. So I don't know what caused it. When I created the event, it didn't make two. It only made the one.
Okay, well, we can look into that then. Okay. Like I, we'll do my updates. I'll, um, I'll ping somebody on, uh. Ping somebody if it's a front end issue.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Jerry.
Yep, uh, one last question. Did anybody look into, uh? I mean, I think you said send it to Wells for the duplicate trust tips. Remember, I sent a reproduction of getting a duplicate trust tip created.
I think he's nailed it. He will send it to.
Did somebody move it forward? Duplicate, sorry, wha- what was it?
Duplicate trust tips.
Jerry, what?
Jerry, you said you all forwarded that to Wells.
Oh, yeah, that is true.
Like, did you? Or like, was it?
Yes, yes, no, I did, I did. That's, that's right. That's right. Now I remember because he was working on the. Cause he was working on the photos upload, so I told him to. Take a look at that as well.
Then we'll get to him in a second. So I mean, let's get your update.
Um, yeah, um, start working on the session replays because even. With like changing the quality, we, we were hoping for that to fix the black session place, but it was not. So I did, I went and I removed that, uh, the other one that says enable view, uh, fast view rendering. It was enabled, immediate falls and the, like, black session replaced it gone. So. It was that sitting that was causing the black session play. So, but I kept playing with this, like this too, like it's a little confusing, like they have one sitting, it's called enable view renderer view two. And they have another one, it's called enable fast view rend- rendering. So. So what I did, like I played with them, so one of them is false, the other one is true. Now this session replay is back to work. But I'm not sure about like the scrolling. Like, yeah, so, yeah, um. It, it's like in the sixty eighth build, if you close, like I did a test, I, I saw that jump in. Uh, on my, on my device.
Sixty eight, I should be able to, well, see. The, happy you made the change.
Yeah, um, like, but you have, like, if you already had the sixty eight, you need to close and open it twice for the. Um, for the OTA, because I did it through an OTA. Yeah.
We'll make sure I'm on sixty eight. Yes, I'm on sixty eight. Okay, so I'm just testing the discover. Before I. So getting an idea, it's pretty smooth. Now let me try the OTA. Supposed to close it like three times, but I'll do a few times to be sure. Yeah. Now it's back to jumping.
Yeah, so I figured that. So what I did is like, right now. Uh, we either like it's session replay or only enable it on fewer people. If you want, like for production. Meantime, I did open an issue in the repo. Explaining everything that we have system replays and here's what we're using, here's why we have this black screen and everything. So hopefully the, they looked up this issuing and can guide us with the fakes because like I went through their, um. Their releases, change logs, nothing, um, like referring in black session replay. I guess it's only us, uh, maybe.
And this is century, but the, you sent them a message?
Not a message, but like the GitHub issue, like in their, uh, repo, GitHub repo.
Centuries repo?
Yep, 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 they're off, they're off century.
Okay, um. Is there all, is there any other configuration? You were saying it was a little bit confusing, like this one could be false, this one could be true. Is there another try?
There is only this, and this is how like I got rid of the block session place, but still like the scoring now it's not fixed, so. I made one false, the other one true. And it's, uh, yeah, it's still not fixing it. We need both of them to be true.
Yeah, that's how, when it works on Android.
How, this is how it makes the scrolling like smooth.
Right, and it still worked on Android.
Yeah, it was still working on Android because those two settings, they are only dedicated for, um. iOS. So it doesn't matter if it's true or false for Android, but for iOS, it doesn't matter, um. So, yeah, we need both of them true to have smooth scrolling. But it's ha- if both of them are true, we don't have session replays problem, so. Yeah, I opened an issue like, um, maybe we wait this Friday or Monday, we got reply from them.
Yeah. Um, okay. I'm just thinking on. What I want to do, if it's. Session replay so valuable. Um, yeah, I guess we'll wait a couple of days and see what they say, huh?
Yeah, I worked on, um, those two other issues.
Uh, session replay is, uh, the build sixty eight. That's not the new architecture, right?
No, it's not.
Well, what if it's not jumping in the new architecture?
We, I mean. Like you, we can try that right now, like I can build to go there.
Yeah, I want to see, cause like maybe we just fast track the release. Of the new architecture, because it's getting pretty close, right?
Yeah, I was about gonna say like I fixed these, uh, the other two issues that you sent me. One, it was like with the lock in the profile, like it says, hey, this is what you can favorite. And the other one that's like in the compose message, I think they were over it. So I fixed those. Yeah, I wanted to, uh, to do a bill today over those two fixes, so you can see, they're all good.
Okay. Is there, are there other lotties where you can apply that same fix proactively? Like maybe I haven't seen all of the lotties, but maybe you know where.
No, the one, the one on the profile screen. I kind of introduced that with the changes that I did to fix that jumping is for the profile when you scroll in.
Oh, okay.
And the other one is too, like, it was just because of the Leo, Leo, the out changes there. So, um, it's, it's, it's like Willie Perkase, um.
Okay, what about, what about friend connects? I haven't seen those because I don't really trigger them in QA. How, how do you know if those ones are working right?
Like I do see this start convo, but for a friend connect, no, I can test that too, like, uh. Cause like I can trigger friends connect for me, manually, so I can, I can test that and see. Like a, like a, I think it's. A bill with the new architect, or it's gonna be.
What do you think the chances are of the session replay working with the new architecture?
Um, let me think about it. Well, decisionally how it works, it does not really rely on the React native itself. It's all like native. The, the whole code, it's like, it's all like C plus plus code, it's native, doesn't really rely on React native, but still. Century here, we're using it with React native, maybe it's not broken inside. The native side, but when, but I don't think like the trans. Yeah, when they have this issue replay, they send it directly from the native to their dashboard, like they're not sending it back to React native. Uh, engine, so I don't think so. But, yeah, I worth a shot, like, if you go now to the build sixty seven. That one has a session replay, so we need to see. Yeah, you can go and scroll and see if it's jumping or not there.
In build sixty seven?
Yep.
Okay, um. But that one. That one has the, uh, their patch, though, right?
Their patch?
Yeah, whatever, you know, the experimental thing they're doing, it's.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not in the new architect, so, yeah.
That did fix the scroll problem, but we.
Yeah, I won't fix the scroll problem, yeah, um, yep.
I guess we know the answer. Well, no way, because there's still, there's this setting you did in sixty eight, where one is true, one is false.
Yeah, yeah, but this sixty eight is just our regular React native. So I, I was gonna do like a new, a bill today, the, the other two fixes that I did. Now I'll add this, uh, fix like we did. For fixing scroll. And we're gonna add it for the new architect as well. Let's see how the scrolling gonna be and also whether it's gonna be fixing the market place.
Okay. So you're gonna have, because in sixty seven, you do have that. Both, both their, um, both the settings are set to true, right?
Let me just verify that right now. No, it's not there. That's the thing, that's enabled fast view rendering, it's not there, uh, in the sixty seven.
It's not.
Yeah, it's not.
So the scroll is probably jumpy in sixty seven?
I mean, should be. Yeah.
Okay. Well. And where, where do you have, where, was it a black screen also in session replay? Yeah, you tried it, well, wait, have you tried it with, with the new architecture? Now I'm getting confused.
Yeah, we did. It's working, the session replay, it's working, but I think this, with the new architect, but staying the score in, it's not.
The scrolling was still jumpy, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, we can confirm that right now if you go to the sixty seven and.
But the, um. But with the patch that they, that century came out with. It smoothed it out, right?
Yeah, it smoothed it out, but we just applied it to our, um, regular React native, because like we thought it's gonna be working, so we're gonna have. The fix immediately for our users. That's why we didn't really, uh, bother to use it for the new architect there, but it, but it will be carried on when we're gonna be merging things. That's why we didn't really uh bother to use it for the new architect there, but it but it will be carried on when we're gonna be merging things eventually. Like my branch with the div, it will be carrying on. So that's why I didn't like manually add it. But I can do it today. Uh.
Okay. But you but it's I'm going to sixty seven. It's installing right now. So sixty seven has session replay with. The um their fix, right?
No, no, it it has the new architect are enabled.
Yeah.
It has the session replay, but without their fix or patch. First quarter.
Oh, I see. Well. It's better.
Mm hmm.
Like much better.
Oh, okay.
Are you sure it doesn't have the fix?
Yeah, um, I'm looking into the code right now. It's not there.
Cuz it's very smooth. I mean, there is a little bit of a jump, but nowhere near like as bad as it was. And then maybe when they fix. Their fix. It'll better, but it would be certainly better here in this way. And this also keeps the texts from jumping around too if uh a message comes in.
Yep, yep.
That's always good. Um. Okay. So session replay is enabled in build sixty seven.
Yeah, it is. Um, with the new architect, they're enabled.
I just did something weird in the chat like it loaded something late. Let me record make sure. Well, let me let me play with this a little bit and you're gonna do a new build?
Yep.
Okay. Um, what else do you have going on?
Um, yeah, it was this and again fixed the two other issues uh for this new architect there. I was like they related to a lot of things that were overlaid. And yeah, apart from reviewing this, we are. Um, yeah, that's that's all.
Okay, um. So what do you have a? Focus next?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. Um, let's see. No, uh, I'll do the building on the new tasks to work on.
Okay. There's plenty, um. Interesting. Um. There is some weird behavior. Let me, let me show you something that's probably be a good thing for you to look at once I let me show my screen. Okay, so this is build sixty seven. Don't think it makes a difference, right? But um. I have it zoomed in on.
Mm hmm.
So as I'm scrolling down, see this one in the preview window says custom topic. Um, right here. It disappears and then it comes back. There's I see that happening kind of a lot. It's hard to tell cuz it's so fast if you're just scrolling, but you can your eye catches like something's wrong.
Mm hmm.
Um, and I've been seeing it just in general, like if I were to. Just just scrolling normal like. But you see, it doesn't do it every time, but like see some of the images on the left did. But um. There that that was I don't know if he caught it, but that. That one at the end, this one where it's a custom topic.
Mm hmm.
Why do you think it's doing that?
Um, yeah, this is the flash list, the new flash list. Um. I I don't know, like maybe um. They have like a threshold. Where do you know where you are about to reach the bottom? So for that, like. They dispose that item from memory because it's out of your site now. So you you just dis- dispose it, but maybe it happens too soon.
Why would it pop back in? It came back.
Yeah.
Um, where is it?
Yeah, maybe all the correct itself. We found out like, oh, no, we send that like at the bottom and it brought this one back. Maybe uh please just um see what I mean uh I have to look into and what's going on.
Okay. Can't find it now. But um you saw it. So yeah, like even just um. The profile images on the side. See right here, like see Ismail's pictures. Why are they?
Um. Um, yeah, and like if like a, okay. Okay, so I think. I don't like I fixed this issue with the images. And I s- cuz it we were using that export image and it was like it has problems and I. Let me see if it's still using it. It's not. Reverse it back to the first image, so. Hmm. Yeah, I think it only happens with images. Like actual images.
Okay.
So.
Also, when it paginated here. It jumped. So.
Yeah, that jump wa- wa- whatever it when it pageinates.
Yeah.
It jumps. Yeah.
Still nothing we can do about that.
Yeah, like waiting on some flashless fix.
Okay, that's right. I remember now, yeah. Um. But why would the custom topic disappear?
Ismail, do you do you remember or know like if that it's an image? The custom topic text with the gradient, is that like a a whole image?
Some topic text.
Like here, like it like, yeah, what it is like, do you know like if this is just an image URL or we built it natively with views?
No, no, it's it's image URL. That's created on the backend side.
Okay, um. See, I think I think it only happens with images. For some reasons, they flicker when recycling happening for flash this, so. I don't know why, but I think this um this is what happening or like really why I have to look and see.
Okay, will you take a look at it?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, so. Um, if you do a solution, it'll solve for the profile pics too, right? So on the left side and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, uh, will you send me that video so I can.
Uh, sure. And then Ismail, while you're here, um, this is kind of minor, but. Well, it gets it gets wonky like for some reason um. These uh words are no longer centered and if this has three digits. It's like over the edge cuz if you notice like like if I put going right up to the side. Of the circle, it's way far like here. Get big gap to the left versus, you know, if I go here. It's much closer. So it's not quite centered. And um. With a bigger number and same with the maybe isn't centered. It looks more centered right here. It may be move. Oh, I bet it moved with the bigger number. I have a screenshot not on this phone. Um, I'll send you the screenshot I'm talking about, but I have a screenshot on my other phone that's in production and it has a three digit number there and it's really far off. Let me send it to you.
You took it. I can just hard quote it and see how it looks.
Okay, but just get a visual, so you know. Cuz like right here, it's not quite as pronounced. Okay, here it is. Okay, I just send it in Slack. It's I wonder why it's so far over here in this case. The one I just sent you was much, it's much further over. It is a different phone. Ones of month. This is a the screenshot I sent you from Pro Max. I don't know why that.
Um, I. Yeah, I I mean, if you look at the word going. It's centered.
No, not. It's even worse. If you zoom in, it's.
The word.
The G is all the way to the edge of the check mark.
Hmm.
Almost all the way, but like of the last G, but the first G. Is like there's like almost.
I think what we had initially was we wanted it to be.
I want the words.
Um, we wanted the worst and then the rest goes to the right. I think that was our original.
That's the plan, yeah, but it's not even centering the word. It's got like all of it shifted too far to the right.
But barely like I I see. I see what you mean, but that's if you're gonna have a long number, you're still gonna have that.
Well, not really, not if it's over further.
Well, on this phone, if you have a slightly smaller phone, then yeah, it is gonna overflow. Um, I mean, I can make sure it's like better centered, but we still want the word to be perfectly centered and the number just goes to the right of it, right?
Yeah, yeah. And then we can bring the buttons together a tiny bit too if we're if we're worried about it.
A little closer, you know, you can do that.
Okay, okay. So yeah, take take a look at that. Okay, so then. So I mean, okay, so let's let's go back to I mean, um. What do you? What do you think uh as far as like? The reliability, stability of this new architecture? Do you? Do you think is there anything holding us back beside, you know, after we testing, is there something else you wanna address on it or is it, do you think it's ready to ship?
Um, aside like the uh other issues, um, like I had to remind that I think I'm kind of looking at us. It's like the jumpiness when you. Uh, pageinate in chat and also like uh performance issue with the reanimated like a specific function. They have it has per- performance issues. That's the one that was causing the jitteriness when you score a profile.
You fixed that, though.
Yeah, I fixed it by not relying on that function. But we use that function other places.
Tell me more, describe that more to me.
So there is a function from reanimated that like it it's called interpolate. So what it does. So you you bound it to uh to us something that it's moving, for example, the scoring. So as you scroll, there is a value there changes, which is the scroll values like the offset scoring. It changes as you scroll and based on that you interpolate from that va- value to uh. To other values you want, like for example, to have something to feed that. So. As long as like this interpolate, for example, from this value to this other value. Uh, uh, print out um the value on the other side from zero to one, for example, for handling the opacity or the fade in. So that's the the that's how it works that. I mean, that's it's what I'm trying to uh.
But more so where like it's here, right? When I scroll at the top. Like that's.
Yeah, this is where it was being used by removed it to not rely on it. And it's not like in all cases it has performance. It's only like in specific cases. Where like.
How how's it working if you removed it? Why? How come we still get the desired behavior?
Yeah, that's that's what I want to say. It depends on what you're trying to animate. Cuz like what I what when we like before, not before, but like how we like in in our current app, like how we. Have this effect. It's like we use that function, but like how we really have it is like as you really you're trying to scroll, the image itself tries to scroll to to up. But what we do, it's like always within it to the top and like uh shrink its size. That's why you can scroll anywhere from th- this page. In this, in this specific case, that function, it has um issues. It makes things jittery when you try to pin. Views as other things are moving.
Hmm. Um. So why did we need it here, though? And how are we?
To have this image, so as you scroll.
Uh huh.
We can shrink the image.
Yeah.
We can move that title from the left side to the little bit to the right.
Yeah, but you removed it, but it's still doing it.
It's 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 not like removed it. It's like, but is this like the new architect?
Mm hmm, yes.
So try to scroll from the image itself, like the image and try to scroll like.
Oh, yeah, you haven't fixed that part yet.
Yeah, so we need that function to be uh not having.
Forgot about that. Okay, I remember it. So we don't have a solution yet?
It's all reanimated, like we have to wait on then fix it. But what we were like able to do is like this, like this fix. We sacrifice the scrolling from the the image itself.
I see.
Uh, now we don't have to iterate.
Okay, I see. Um.
Yeah, this is the two things done within.
Okay, I did this too. This was a problem like in the. Current version we were but.
Mm hmm.
It's supposed to say trust tip up here too. That's all like the whole header is cut off.
Yeah, yeah, I see, so.
Um, this was already a problem like uh like a month, two months ago, maybe, but. How come? Why do you think it came back?
Would the fix that I did like it because I had to um to change stuff on the screen.
Hmm, okay.
But yeah, so send me this image. Um.
Okay, yeah, I sent that to you. Okay, um. Okay, so as far as like shipping this, you pointed out that we won't be able to scroll from the image. I get I get.
Yeah.
Okay.
And apart from this, like we 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 need to heavily test it, like there's everything like the uh I so. There's other thing that I wanted to test that I could forget. I think it's like the player. Um, podcast players and all of that. I wanted to test that.
Mm hmm.
Um, yeah, so we need to heavily this this thing like this uh like basically. We you we use it as we use the app normally with the new Washington, so we can spot all the issues.
Yeah. If I'm, if we wanted to do a release. I guess we could do a production release for just. Just a test flight and we can use it in production where it's more.
Yeah.
But could we couldn't just have certain user keys get it, though?
Hmm, no, no, like we can't.
Okay.
It's like it's everything is from the ground down.
Right, right, okay. Why do you think it's doing this slow start? Now it's fast, but the first. It was doing a slow. Like when I went to. It was basically going. Like. I guess I'm not gonna be able to demonstrate. Oh, yeah, there it did it again. Were it like. I'm not able to swipe back. Is that normal?
Is this like a, do we have this right now in the app?
Me too. Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, I can swipe back, but what also what I was gonna show was um let me record it. I've been recording this. Oh, wait. I'm not recording. I'm on. Did I stop screen sharing?
Yep.
Okay, well, I can record it then and show you. There is a A two. Okay, I got it. Um. One sec. I feel like we're gonna, we could be hunting these little things forever. All the little things we polished in the original version. I feel like we're gonna, we could be hunting these little things forever, all the little things we polished in the original version. So like, okay, I'm gonna navigate here, um. This, this felt pretty normal right here. Um, there's no swipe back. Um, but when I did it again the second time. Let me play it in real time, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start from here, let me play it in real time. So go back. And then I tried a different profile here, there, did you see how there was like a? Slow. Um. I'm gonna back up, so I I'm here. I press on Wells' profile picture, it like starts right here, I'm still going forward. I'm still, then it goes. I'm noticing it do that a lot, and then I'm also noticing when I go back. Um. There's a delay, like, almost um, the app feels kind of heavy, like uh.
Mm hmm.
Something's slowing it down. So. Let me play it again in regular speed. Do you see how it stuttered, I don't know if you could see it through the Google Meets?
Um.
And it stutters right here, right there, it stops right on this. Spot.
Mm hmm. Um, I mean, normally in the second navigation thing should be fast, because.
Yeah.
Um.
And then even just the back button was slow. Like, if I um. Doesn't this restart a lot too? Why did it restart on me? So let me go back to discover, that's even slow there. Now I don't have a discover feed. Got some issues going on here.
Maybe like there's um, deploying going on, just to secure.
Jerry, are you deploying to production?
Uh, no, not the production.
Or to QA?
I'm deploying QA right now, I just started, yeah.
Okay. Li- let me know when the, how, when did you start?
Uh, two minutes ago, so it should be done any minute now.
Okay, you gotta let me know, because I don't want to chase ghosts around here.
Sure, but uh. All right, yeah, it just finished, so you might need to reopen the app.
Okay.
It's probably re- overriding it.
Okay. There still is a lag when I press even the discover button right there.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, there's that stutter there. And then when I press back, that was pretty quick on the back, but. Um. There is a.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, where do you see the stuff, like, exactly, like, is it just? When it's about to be navigating, or like, when you're there, but things are being slow?
Right.
Yep, also.
Transition.
It's only when you're sharing your screen?
Hmm.
Make sure.
Um. It's not, because this is a screen record.
Oh, yeah, true.
Screen record, okay, well, a screen record typically a screen share, so, okay, so this is something that happens regardless of you. Recording your screen, okay.
Yeah, actually, I was, I wasn't sharing my screen.
But if you were recording, that still is overhead.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you like, try again, like stop sharing it?
Yeah. Yeah, it still does it. I'm off Google Meets completely. Um, interestingly, the back is swiping for me. Me. It was not swiping back for me before.
Maybe before, because you want like screenshot, and it adds that little widget or everyone decides.
Hmm, maybe, yeah. But it is still doing that stutter, um. Yeah, it's every time. Um, Ismail did uh, a. A. Improvement to these screens, you should probably merge to you, to the branch you're working on. Um, to get up to date on it, so. I'll show you what I mean.
Yeah, yesterday before, like uh, my internet broke, like I was saying, uh, I was seeing the, this memory he shared. Like he fixed like the avatars there and everything.
Yeah, um, exactly, and also, yeah, so like it doesn't move around, like um.
Mm hmm.
So when you come into a screen, how it jumps down right here, right? There.
Mm hmm.
Um, solve that, also the image on top, like. Actually, this probably will affect. What you're doing, the fix, okay, oh yeah, see how it's avatar right there?
Mm hmm.
And then it goes. Straight to that, he um. He made it. Skeleton loader first, and then like fades in, so. I don't know how much of that could affect. Like this transition. I don't know how much code there is. Around it, but. Before you start fixing this.
Hmm.
You should probably merge his, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll merge, I'll try to merge Dev with my branch. So we can have everything we worked on with the.
As, yeah, how long has it been since you've done that?
I think like two weeks, three weeks, something like that.
Oh, so you're gonna definitely have some conflicts, right?
Yeah, I know one, um, it's like in the chat messages less, but I tried it before. Like the conflicts, they were not like huge, they were like uh, easy to resolve, so I know what to do there. Um, other conflicts, yeah, um. But yeah, I'm I'm keeping track of things, uh, I can see what's need to be uh, uh, kept and needs to be moved.
Okay, Is- Ismail, um. Before Amin starts on this. Is there anything he shouldn't be aware of, like? The style changes you did where uh. It prevents the jumping here and has the faded.
It's, no, nothing crazy, I mean, it's just mainly adding some skeleton loaders and um, fixing the styles and those screens, it's. Sorry to merge it then, he he reviewed the PR yesterday, so he he has access to that code, if he wants to merge it in with his branch before he starts. But there's nothing like specific to that is like out of the ordinary.
Okay, okay, um. I mean, what do you think is happening, like there, I feel like there, this stop right here, where it stops with like, it's all gray on the side. There's nothing there, there's no data yet, so it like stops. For like a second, and then when it goes again. Right here, I'm going forward, there, okay, so when it starts going. It doesn't start going until there's something, like right. Here. Um, that's new. Why, why is it, it's doing something new?
Could be something like the running in the background that we don't know, maybe a lot of you, something that's keeping the CPU, there's something loading the CPU. But again, if there's something, it could affect the scrolling, but we don't have that problem. Or maybe it's like something minimal, like it's not spinning up the whole CPU, but might be ten percent, twenty percent. That's causing this not.
But why, um, why does the transition hesitate? And then continue after. These components appear, it's very strange to me.
Yeah, yeah, um. It, maybe like um, cause like as we transition, we call in APIs and everything. Maybe that API call is blocking the transition until only solved, then uh.
Okay, so, so something like that, could that be? Where? Um. Oh, I guess, is it a backend, or is it just gonna be all frontend?
No, it's it's gonna be frontend.
Okay, I wanna see like what it used to look like here in the past, because I have lots of screen records. Usually I love the screen records. Hmm, maybe. Oh, here we go.
I was gonna say, this one is different. Like. She had someone from home.